Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rosado, clear roll call, please.
Ms. Azalina?
Here.
Ms. Cooper? Mr. Casado?
Here.
Mrs. Mountain? Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Peck?
Here.
Ms. Perrine?
Here.
Mr. Bertus?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Mr. Corum?
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Westwood Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof: Westwood Borough Hall, Westwood Public Library, Township of Washington Administration Building, Township of Washington Free Public Library, The Record, Community Life, and The Pasqueag Press. Can we have a motion of minute approval, please? Heather? And Ms. Azalina, I'm sorry, Ms. Perrine, Ms. Azalina, a second. Discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Casado?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Bertus?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. We'll move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. McQueenie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Good evening, everyone. Over the past month, we have begun important work connected to the 2025-2026 district goals that the board approved just last month. These goals were shaped through a collaborative process with our students, families, staff, and community, and they provide a clear roadmap for the year ahead. Since their approval, we have identified specific action items that each department and school will be focusing on in order to bring these goals to life. From improving instructional practices in literacy and math, to strengthening our mentoring for new teachers, and developing a teacher leadership cohort, to reinstating a district safety and security specialist and expanding attendance supports, every building and department has a role to play. This shared responsibility ensures that progress is not abstract, but measured in tangible steps that directly support our students. I will provide my next update regarding our goals at our November meeting with specific actionable items that we have started or completed to help meet our district goals. In addition, I will be sharing a communication with our entire learning community around that time so that all families and staff can stay informed of our progress. Last evening, our four elementary schools hosted their back-to-school nights, and each one reflected the commitment and passion of our staff. I had the pleasure of visiting each school, and it was inspiring to see the excitement of students, families, and teachers as they came together to start the year. Families had the opportunity to see how classrooms are being designed as places of engagement, challenge, and care. The energy was incredibly positive and echoed the message shared by our opening day keynote speaker, Mr. Thomas Murray, who reminded us to always come back to our why. These evenings were not just about schedules or curriculum. They were about showcasing the purpose behind our work, the joy of learning, and the partnership we share with families. It was powerful to witness firsthand the pride in our schools and the strong sense of community that supports our students. Finally, I would like to introduce this evening a new district initiative that speaks to the heart of our community: Once a Cardinal, Always a Cardinal. This effort recognizes staff members who are also alumni of the Westwood Regional School District. At last count, we are fortunate to have fifty-nine staff members who fall into this category. We will be hosting a small reception to honor them, and each will receive a keepsake to celebrate their dual role as graduates and educators in our district. Looking ahead, we plan to continue this tradition annually at our opening day convocation each year, recognizing both new and current alumni staff. I want to extend a sincere thank you to Mrs. Kelly Rydel, our district director of school counseling, for bringing this initiative to me and helping bring it to life. This initiative is more than recognition. It is a reflection of the pride and loyalty that makes our district special and a reminder that being a Cardinal is not limited to the years spent in school, but is a lifelong connection. There is no greater compliment to a school district or a community than to have alumni choose to return and dedicate their work and passion back to the very place that helped shape them. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McQueenie. So my president's report, just want to share. In every town, the schools are more than buildings. They're the heartbeat of the community. Here in Westwood Regional, our schools are where children learn, families gather, and neighbors connect. They belong to all of us, and they thrive when we remain steady, consistent, and focused on one purpose: supporting every student. That's why it's so important that our district remains steady, consistent, and focused with every decision. Every child deserves to feel valued, not overshadowed, by politics or partisanship. Our commitment is to support them as individuals while also lifting them together as one WWRSD community. From time to time, requests come in from across the political spectrum to use our schools as some sort of backdrop. Each time, our response is the same. We keep our schools neutral. This is not about silencing voices. It's about protecting the integrity of our classrooms and hallways. Students deserve to form their own opinions, free from the weight of a board or district imposing them. At the same time, we celebrate open dialogue. Freedom of speech and respectful exchange of ideas are vital in our educational community. But the schools themselves must remain places of fairness, consistency, and unbiased integrity, where every decision is guided by those principles. Now, more than ever, we need unity. The world may feel divided, but here at home, in our district, we can be different. In Westwood Regional, we have the chance to model for our students what respect and togetherness truly looks like, even with differences of opinion. And so, as we gather for back-to-school nights, as we cheer on our sports teams, as our students join these clubs and we support them and we enjoy performances, let us remember: Our students are brothers and sisters in one Cardinal family, and above all else, we remain united by our shared commitment to them, to help every student succeed and thrive. Thank you. And Mr. Rosado, business administrator's report, please.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I wanted to review, and we have one meeting tonight, but just a quick project update for Washington HVAC. It was a major project that was taken on this summer, converting all the units that were just heat to heat and AC. The project came down to the wire, but they got all the infrastructure in. The contractor is still working on the final connections to the boilers, trims, and finishes, and, but they will be up and running in time for our heating season. The AC portion of the project still needs to be tested and balanced. That won't happen until March or April because by the time they put everything in, we won't be able to run the AC units. So come April, March, they'll come back to do the balancing and making sure everything and programming is all in order for the startup of the AC needed season. Another item I wanted to mention, the district auditors were in last week, probably about ten days, for the completion, to perform the twenty-five-twenty-six annual audit fieldwork. That is complete. They're still, they're writing, they're in the process of writing a report and waiting for some numbers from not only the state, but some other items that we have to get to them for our fixed assets and payouts on sick and vacation. But the presentation of the report will be presented to the board at a board meeting in either December or January, depending on when we get those numbers from the state. They will discuss the district findings, which we haven't heard anything positive fieldwork. And that will conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rosado. I want to welcome Ms. Goldman and Mr. Rizbud to the stage. And our favorite part, if you guys could take it away with your students' representative report.
Starting with news from the pre-K, our preschool teachers are happy to report that our 2025-2026 school year is off to a great start. The students are becoming more familiar with their classroom, learning daily routines, and beginning to build new friendships. The students are also enjoying engaging with their peers during make-believe play. We are currently playing in our colored centers, which include literacy, art, science, table toys, dramatic play, and blocks. These centers allow the students to play in the sandbox, create with Play-Doh, build with blocks, and much more. In science, we are discussing the weather and the change in seasons as we count, chart, and graph our sunny, rainy, and cloudy days. We will begin to discuss the fall season in apples. During math, we've been working on puzzles using various manipulatives and counting. Parents will learn more about the amazing things happening in our preschool during back-to-school night on October seventh. We are looking forward to a great year in the preschool.
In the elementary schools, our elementary schools are proud to share that the 2025-2026 school year is off to a strong and inspiring start. Over the past few weeks, all four elementary buildings opened their doors with energy, enthusiasm, and a renewed sense of purpose, warmly welcoming our students and families back into their school communities. The start of the year was marked by joyful reunions, excited first-time learners, and staff who were eager to foster meaningful connections from day one. Each school hosted a successful back-to-school night, which served not only as an informational event, but also as a celebration of the partnership between home and school. These evenings were filled with thoughtful conversations, smiles in the hallways, and shared excitement from the learning and growth ahead. Teachers and staff proudly showcased their classrooms and curriculum while families had the opportunity to see firsthand the nurturing, student-centered environments we are so committed to providing.
Moving on to the middle school. The Westwood Regional Middle School has experienced a truly fantastic start to the academic year, welcoming all sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students with great enthusiasm and a renewed sense of purpose. Over the past few weeks, our halls have been filled with positive energy as students and families rejoined our vibrant school community. We are also eagerly gearing up for our annual back-to-school night on September thirtieth, providing an excellent opportunity for parents to connect with teachers and learn about the year ahead. We also proudly kicked off our academic support lab this week, offering students dedicated time during their lunch period to receive extra support in various courses, reinforcing our commitment to student success. It has been a strong and promising start for the entire school community.
As for district wellness, our students have transitioned into a new school year with the support of their school-building team of teachers, administrators, counselors, and staff. Counselors introduced and reintroduced themselves and their roles to students across all grade levels. Throughout this month, counselors and I and RS teams have presented to staff on interventions to support students throughout the school year. We will raise awareness during September Suicide Prevention Month at the middle school and high school the week of September twenty-second.
For the high school, beginning with academics, parents will be welcomed to the high school for back-to-school night on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty p.m. Mr. Conley, the entire administration, and all of our teachers are looking forward to it. The first pep rally of the school year for high schoolers will be held on October tenth. There will be a variety of fun activities and increased high school spirit throughout the entire school. The high school will be hosting a college financial aid presentation on October thirtieth for parents. Please reach out to the counseling department for more information on this presentation. It's that time of the year again. College counselors from all across the country will be visiting Westwood Regional High School. They will be informing students about the amazing college opportunities that schools from all across the country have to offer. A few of the schools that have visited Westwood thus far are Rowan, Bucknell, Marist, and Barnard. Students can sign up for future information sessions through Naviance. The high school will be having an in-school SAT day on October twenty-second. The registration deadline for this SAT is September twenty-ninth. Finally, the Westwood Regional School District is closed on September twenty-second, twenty-third, and October second for both students and staff.
As for athletics, our fall sports are in full swing and off to a great start. The majority of our fall sports teams have winning records, including girls soccer and football, who are undefeated. Good luck to our fall sports teams as they continue their seasons and head into state and county tournaments. Congratulations to the Westwood football team, who were honored as Team of the Week after their recent win against Pasqueag Valley. The win moved them to two-and-oh. Last Friday, the team also beat Pasqueag Hills twenty-seven to zero, moving them to three-and-oh as they head off to Caldwell for their next game tomorrow night. Senior night games are approaching as the fall teams will be honoring their seniors who have dedicated four years of hard work to their athletic programs. Come support the teams and recognize the hard work and dedication of our senior athletes. We have many upcoming events in terms of athletics, so make sure to come out and support your Cardinal sports teams this fall.
Turning to clubs, the Westwood Regional High School Club Fair was held yesterday, September seventeenth. The turnout was excellent as students from all grades at the high school had an amazing opportunity to learn about nearly forty clubs that we have to offer. From the debate team to the yo-yo club, there really is no club that the high school does not have. The WTV club is off to a hot start in the 2025-2026 school year. They continue to produce Live in the AM, a morning show, multiple times a week, keeping high school students updated on school events, the sports schedule, and important dates for students to remember. They also provided a platform for student council speeches to be delivered this week.
In performing arts, the band and choir have been hard at work this school year on various pieces of music as they look ahead to the winter concert in December. The Woodington Players held auditions yesterday for their fall play, Twelve Angry Jurors. We wish luck to all the talented people who audition before the cast list is announced tomorrow. We eagerly anticipate coming to see the show on November twelfth, thirteenth, and fifteenth. Exact times will be announced at a later date.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman and Mr. Rizbud. Great job. Look forward to a fun year with you guys. Hope you enjoy as well. We'll move to committee reports. And Ms. Azalina, can you take us away with personnel and policy, please?
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. First, I'd like to say welcome back to all of our Cardinal family, especially our new student reps, Zach and Madeline. I'm always so impressed by our student reps. For anyone who doesn't know, they work incredibly hard to join us on this stage. So thank you guys so much for your dedication to our school. Mr. Garcia, I was not kidding. You guys are our favorite part. We look forward to your reports. So thank you guys so much for being here. To the staff, students, we hope that everyone has started the school year smoothly and easily. Policy and personnel had a busy but very productive summer. We have introduced some incredible new staff, and we're very lucky tonight to be here honoring some of our most tenured staff. And we are looking forward to another amazing school year of getting good work done. We held our last meeting, I'm sorry, we held our meeting last week, September ninth. We looked at several notable topics. Most importantly, we continued our ongoing discussion in regards to the school demographic study, specifically projected classroom sizes, the need for our district to accommodate the rise in students in the future, and our capacity as a district to adapt to those incoming needs. We also reviewed the process of conducting a needs assessment to update the long-term facilities plan in accordance with those needs. As a part of Dr. McQueenie's effort to streamline consistency throughout the district, job descriptions have been continually updated and refined. During our meeting, we discussed updating school nurse, confidential secretary, substitute teacher, Title One Coordinator, and Title One Advisor. All of those are reflected in the agenda. Finally, we reviewed policy five-one-one-two entrance age with slight wording changes to ensure our district standards remained. But as a very important note to all parents, the cutoff date is still the first of October, and no changes have been made in terms of when you can enter your child. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Azalina. We'll move to finance and facility. Chairperson Bertus, please.
Finance and facilities met on September ninth. In attendance were Jason Garcia, Andrea Peck, Barbara Rabinati, Keith Rosado, Dr. McQueenie, and myself. We discussed the possibility of a referendum to address class size and capacity requirements as per the results of the demographic study. Dr. McQueenie and team are assessing the needs, and discussions will continue. We're going out to bid for special ed legal services. Bidders and rates are in. We have not begun interviews with the candidates. Good news, the district's standard and pores rating has increased to double A-plus. So great job to Mr. Rosado and the business administrator's team, making sure that we can address our future financial needs. It was already an update on the HVAC. I'll skip that. The George School switchgear will be switched on next week, and the discussions with the local police departments are ongoing regarding the Brookside repaving and possible traffic pattern changes. The next meeting is October fourteenth. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bertus. Now, Chairperson Peck, can you take it through curriculum and instruction, please?
Yes, the curriculum committee met on September ninth. In attendance was myself, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Perrine, and Ms. Mountain, with Dr. McQueenie, Dr. Calderon, and Ms. Velez. The committee reviewed several key updates related to student programming and district policy. Mrs. Velez discussed the early literacy letter sent to parents of K to three students. The district is awaiting state guidance on the final data reporting format and is working to determine the best assessment practices for students in the LLD program, which may involve a supplemental letter to parents. The committee also reviewed policy five-one-one-two. As Ms. Azalina discussed earlier, a discussion was held regarding removing the language that allows for exceptions to the October first age cutoff for first-grade entry. The current kindergarten enrollment stands at two-hundred-and-one students. Dr. McQueenie led the same discussion with policy and personnel about the demographic study and its potential impact on future class sizes. The committee then reviewed Dr. Calderon's preliminary slides for the upcoming NJSLA presentation on mathematics, ELA, and science, which will be delivered at the October professional development meeting. And finally, Dr. Calderon presented the results of the parent survey regarding the attendance corrective action plans for the Westwood Regional High School and Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Peck. Now, we're going to move along to awards and recognitions. We have A through C, three items, so I'm going to ask Ms. Peck to read motion A, please.
Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolution be adopted. Whereas Eagle Scout represents the highest achievement of rank attainable in the Scouts BSA program of the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas the Westwood Regional School District would like to recognize Derek Kane, twelfth-grade student, for earning the rank of Eagle Scout, and now therefore be it resolved that the Westwood Regional Board of Education hereby congratulates Derek Kane for this accomplishment, directs the secretary to include this resolution in the official minutes of the Board of Education, and directs the superintendent of schools to present the student with a suitable certificate of recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Peck. All in favor?
Second.
Let's see, maybe a second? Mr. Casado, second? All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Rosado.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We're going to invite Mr. Derek Kane down. Love you to talk a little bit about your project, if you would.
Keep it close. Hello? Thank you very much for recognizing me for this accomplishment. My project, as you may or may not know, is the Washington Township Community Garden at the Bethany Community Center. It consists of sixteen garden beds surrounded by a fence to keep out pests. The beds can be rented each calendar year by the public through the Bethany Community Center. The idea of the garden behind the Bethany Center started years ago by the Green Team. They had buckets where they grew herbs and vegetables for the Golden Seniors. Wanting to bring people together and form a stronger sense of community, I expanded on this idea to build a much larger garden to be accessible to everyone. I certainly did not do this by myself. I had a lot of help. I would like to thank Washington Township Troop Three Twenty-One, Scouts, families, and so many friends, and my parents for their constant support along the way. I had support from the Knights of Columbus, Cucun Brothers, Fresh Grocer, Stone Mill Gardens, and of course, the Bethany Community Center. The first season, there was so much happening in the garden. People were planting sunflowers, pumpkins, tomatoes, cucumbers, peppers, strawberries, all sorts of herbs, and even popcorn. Tom Sears and the Green Team have their own garden that they've already harvested tons of tomatoes, zucchini, peppers, and basil that they deliver to the Golden Seniors in town. It's so rewarding to see how a simple idea can turn into something that is so positively impactful for our community. When driving up Pasqueag and passing Bethany Community Center, be sure to take a look at the garden from the road. I hope you'll check it out and be inspired to reserve a garden bed for next year. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
I'm incredibly impressed by many of our students, Eagle Scouts as well. And I love the way they acknowledge everybody else along the way. So thank you, everybody, and congratulations again. Now, I'm going to have Ms. Martin, can you read motion B, please, under awards and recognition?
Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolution be adopted. Whereas the College Board's Advanced Placement AP Program offers students the opportunity to take challenging college-level courses while still in high school. And whereas successful performance in the end-of-course AP exams potentially qualifies students to receive college credit, advanced placement, or both at colleges and universities worldwide. And whereas the College Board annually grants the academic distinction of AP Scholar to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. And whereas that the Westwood Regional School District Board of Education does hereby commend Caitlin Brill, Diane Castro, Alex Clifford, Sierra DeFabio, Sawyer Donnis, Luke Ender, Olivia Falcon, Tristan Fiara, Anthony Garcia Ocelot, Sienna Garcia, Jackson Hannan, William Harahy, Maya Hernandez, David Ismali, Gabrielle Kop, Barbara Montez Ocelot, Angel Morales, Owen O'Malley, Lucas Pissaro, Shayla Peterson, John Pissot, Ben Rabbinowitz, Daniella Roborio, and Max Silverstein for earning the honor of AP Scholar, which recognizes exemplary college-level achievement on advanced placement program exams. And whereas the College Board annually grants the academic distinction of AP Scholar with honor to students who receive an average score of at least three-point-two-five on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And whereas the Westwood Regional School District Board of Education does hereby commend Anthony Caparelli, Grady Connolly, Camelia Delgado, Dylan Denalo, Riley Falk, Andrew Govenco, Katerina Kovak-Ikova, Sophie Lebrun, Sophia Mastriati, Leah Rabinati, and Michaela Sanchez for earning the honor of AP Scholar with honor, which recognizes the exemplary college-level achievement on advanced placement program exams. And whereas the College Board annually grants the academic distinction of AP Scholar with distinction to students who receive an average score of at least three-point-five on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. And whereas that the Westwood Regional School District Board of Education does hereby commend Mary Affenito, Samantha Arturo, Alexander Asfar, Phoenix Ballard, Luke Baumgartner, Colin Bender, Andre Chevriere, Sarah Choco, Kristen Doyle, Aiden Dugan, Lacy Dunkelman, Greta Gashler, Luke Gutteridge, Bryce Halgren, Caleb Hari, Emma Lagatole, Caitlin Langone, Kathy Liao, Matthew Lombardi, Reed Lomer, Gabriela Martinez, Jordan Miselli, Beatrice Mitchell, Alice Rapazzo, Zachary Rizbud, Daniel Shokin, Isabella Whalen, Brooke Wickman, and Aaron Zeiler for earning the honor of AP Scholar with distinction, which recognizes exemplary college-level achievement on advanced placement program exams. And now therefore be it resolved that the Westwood Regional School Board of Education hereby congratulates these students for their accomplishments, directs the secretary to include this resolution in the official minutes of the Board of Education, and directs the superintendent of schools to present the students with a suitable certificate of recognition.
Can I get a second? Ms. Peck? All in favor? That's amazing how long that takes, right? That's impressive when we just keep rolling and rolling. So, most, a lot of them, those students that we just acknowledged, are on to, let's say, bigger and better things. But anybody who is here, please come on down. We'll take a picture and we'll have your certificate.
So, our next honors and award this evening, we are recognizing our staff members that have achieved 25 years of service to the district. So, this evening, we have various other staff members that will recognize them. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. La Forge to do the introductions.
All right, so we have a very special honor this evening for many of our staff members. This evening, we will be honoring those staff members who have achieved 25 years of service to the Westwood Regional School District. So, I would like to first introduce Leslie Bisdale, if you could come down, please. And Ms. Lamb, if you could.
So, I've had the honor of personally having an opportunity to share a classroom with Leslie, so I'm honored to be here on your behalf today. It's truly a privilege to honor Leslie Bisdale for her 25 years of dedicated service to Westwood. Through her time as a classroom aide, Leslie has brought remarkable care, patience, and heart to every student and every colleague she has worked with. Leslie has a rare gift for recognizing each child's unique needs and helping them feel supported, safe, and valued. Her ability to form genuine connections with students and staff alike has left a lasting impression that will continue for years to come. Even at her retirement celebration, it was clear just how deeply she has touched our community. Students shared heartfelt letters expressing the difference she made in their lives. Leslie's dedication, kindness, and unwavering commitment to our students' well-being have made Westwood a better place for all of us. Thank you, Leslie, for 25 incredible years of service and for the lasting legacy of care and compassion that you leave behind.
Next, we would like to honor Mr. Paul Castellini.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Tamburi, and I am the principal, interim principal, here at the middle school. And I have such a great honor to speak about someone tonight, actually, two people tonight from the middle school. So, I am blessed to be speaking about Paul tonight, even though I've only known Paul for the last nine months. But I was able to get some assistance from some of our colleagues here at the middle school. So, Paul, this is from your staff. We're here tonight to honor Paul Castellini and his 25 years of service in our district. When you hit a milestone like this, it's not just about a number, it's about the person and the impact they've had. And Paul, you made one. When I started pulling notes together for this, a few things kept coming up and again and again. First, just how genuine and approachable you are. Laura said you're a genuine and smiling face in the halls. And Mary mentioned that when she hears students talking about you, it's always with affection and respect. That tells you everything you need to know. And in the classroom, you're the real deal. After graduating from Rutgers with a degree in environmental science, you spent the past two and a half decades making science easy to get for our students. Shaun talked about how you make the content understandable, and Mary said your students are always engaged and excited. You don't teach the facts, you make the class a place kids actually want to be. And then there's your coaching. We all know Paul's dedication extends from beyond the classroom. He's been on the sidelines and on the mats since 2001, shaping athletes as a football coach for 20 years and a wrestling coach for the last 25. Matt remembers you from his freshman football days, and Shaun pointed out, have you helped so many young athletes, not just in their sports, but in life, by teaching them about hard work and getting better every day. You've been a role model to a lot of kids. And to us, your colleagues, you're a fantastic friend. Kelly said it's a privilege to work for you. And Suzanne thanked you for all the humor and experience you share. Eric said, perfectly calling you a trusted and respected colleague and friend. Paul, you've dedicated a quarter century to this community, shaping the lives of students and athletes. On behalf of all of us here, and from the middle school, and the high school as well, your dedication, your passion, and your friendship have made Westwood a much better place. Congratulations on 25 years. Cheers to you, Paul.
And next, we would like to welcome Mrs. Pam Duffis from the high school.
Good evening. My name is Frank Connolly, principal here at Westwood Regional High School. Congratulations to all the staff being recognized for 25 years. Fabulous. Congratulations to Derek and all of our AP Scholars. I have had the honor of being Pam Duffis's colleague for approximately 20 years. I was actually supervisor of VPA, I actually laugh when I say that, just so you know. At one point, with absolutely no knowledge of the content area, and Pam was always a big help. She has always gone above and beyond for her students, taking them on various school day and overnight trips, such as the Grand Canyon, and taking her students to Portfolio Day at the Jacob Javits Center, which is coming up again, by the way, contributing to many of her talented students receiving multiple scholarships over the years. She played a major role in so many positive community programs and events, such as the Memory Project, Neighborhood Expressions, the STEAM Expo, Pumpkin Painting and Carving, which my daughters absolutely loved a very long time ago, and Westwood Regional School District Has Heart. She has mentored many of our staff over the years as well. She has inspired hundreds of students through the power of art. Over the past quarter of a century, she has done more than teach technique. She has opened minds, sparked creativity, and shown generations of students that art is not just about what you see, but about what you feel and how you express it. Pam, thank you. Thank you for everything you do for our students, school, and community. I would like to share a few quotes from her colleagues. Karen Forgione, Pam is a class act and the creative engine of the art program in Westwood. Her vision drive and dedication to her students are truly unmatched. Over the years, she has made countless contributions that have enhanced the entire VPA program. From young artist trips, to the WWRSD Has Heart show, to Neighborhood Expressions, there are countless examples, and it would be impossible to overstate her impact. Our community is incredibly fortunate to have benefited from her talents over the past 25 years. Congratulations, Pam. Chris Mello, for 25 years, Ms. Duffis has been a constant source of inspiration and guidance for so many of our students. She has encouraged them to explore beyond the comfortable and to embrace artistic challenges. She has provided invaluable support to nurture students' growth in the classroom and beyond, while providing the springboard to help them to carry their creativity into the heart of their communities. Michelle Keller, Pam Duffis consistently brings insight and ideas into our joint collaborations. Beyond the professional projects, workshops, and presentations we've created together, she's someone I can rely on, laugh with, and turn to for an honest perspective. Working with Pam isn't just productive, it's a joy. I'd like to thank her for being a fantastic collaborator and a true friend. Amy Grossman, Pam is a wonderful, inspiring colleague that I really enjoy working with. Her motivation, creative ideas, positive attitude, enthusiasm are an integral part of the success of our department. I am also really looking forward to attending and presenting with her at an upcoming art conference this year. Congrats, Pam, on 25 years. And Joan Peticelli, Pam is one of the most kind, caring, intelligent, and creative people I have ever met. She has been a mentor and friend to me and so many others at Westwood Regional High School. Pam cares for each student that comes into her classroom and is always looking for new ways to elevate art education. She is an exceptional person and educator. Congratulations, Pam.
Next, I would like to welcome Ms. Kathy Jenny. Mrs. Pallianto could not be here this evening, but she prepared a few words that I will read for her. So, it is my honor today to recognize and celebrate an extraordinary milestone. 25 years of dedicated service by our colleague and friend, Kathy Jenny. Kathy and I began this journey 25 years ago at Kettler School, and I am grateful that our paths have remained connected ever since. Over the years, I have firsthand seen Kathy's unwavering commitment to her students, her colleagues, and the profession of teaching. Kathy's love for literacy has inspired countless students to not only learn how to read, but to fall in love with the joy of reading. For the last several years, we have been fortunate to have Kathy as part of our Washington School family. Her dedication, her professionalism, and her quiet but powerful influence have left an imprint on both the staff and students she has served. On a personal note, I had the privilege of observing Kathy on an opportunity, and I have to echo Mrs. Pallianto's sentiments. The classroom environment you create and the love of learning, you can feel it the second you walk in the classroom. Kathy, 25 years is an incredible achievement, and we are so grateful for the time, care, and heart you have poured into your work. You've helped shape not only young readers, but also better people. And you've helped shape us as colleagues, too. On behalf of our entire school community, thank you for your passion, your service, and your friendship. Congratulations on this milestone, Kathy. You have truly made a difference. We would also like to welcome Ms. Rita Keon.
So, Ms. Keon and I have been sharing a classroom, split classroom, for the last two years, my whole time here. So, she's a really special person to me, and I'm so glad that she's here today. So, I'm going to read, so I don't tear up. It's an absolute honor to celebrate Rita Keon and her incredible 25 years of service to our district. Rita has been a constant source of knowledge, encouragement, and compassion, and her impact on Brookside has been immeasurable. As an academic support teacher, special education teacher, and homeroom teacher, she has provided countless children with not only the tools to succeed academically, but also the confidence and care that come from her dedicated heart. Rita's unwavering commitment to excellence and her deep love of her students have touched the lives in ways that extend far beyond the classroom. She's been a role model, a mentor, and a friend, both to her students and to all of us fortunate enough to have the opportunity to work alongside her. We're so grateful for her years of service, the legacy of learning that she continues to share, and the warmth that she has shared with our entire school community. Congratulations, Rita, on this well-deserved milestone.
We'd also like to honor Mrs. Theodora Petuska.
So, I'm back up here because I've only known Theodora for the last nine months, but it's been such a pleasure working with her and Paul and all the staff here at the middle school. But I get to have a special night here to say a little something special about Theodora as well. Good evening. We are here to honor a remarkable educator and colleague, Theodora Petuska, as we celebrate her 25 years of dedicated service to our district. I went through the list of messages that I've asked your colleagues to share with me. So, this is a circle of life, of your years at the middle school. The messages I received from colleagues paint a clear picture of her lasting impact. Kelly and Matt both spoke about Theodora, welcomed and guided them when they first joined the district. Leila and Ally highlighted her as a crucial source of support, calling her "the right-hand lady" and "a trusted friend." Theodora's influence on our students is equally profound. Shaun noted how she helps students find their passion for reading and becoming an effective communicator. Her colleagues also rely on her for so much more, as Laura shared Theodora's experience and dedication to what is right, fair, and productive. Make her the school mom for so many. And as Mary pointed out, Theodora's contributions go beyond the classroom, from the WEA to...
from the WEA to the Sunshine Committee. She is the constant source of support and positive energy for everyone. Eric and Suzanne both spoke to the incredible legacy Theodora has built, touching the lives of generations of students and colleagues. They described her as a pillar of our community, a source of wisdom, and a true friend. Theodora, congratulations on this amazing milestone. Thank you for your leadership, your dedication, and for the lasting positive impact you have on your students and our staff at the middle school. You truly make a difference.
And last but not least, Mr. Ray Renshaw. Ray's a partner in crime, we'll say. Jess Gluck prepared some statements or some words this evening, so I'm going to read them on her behalf. It is my honor to stand here today to recognize and celebrate Mr. Ray Renshaw for his 25 years of dedicated service to Westwood Regional School District. Ray's journey began with us right here at the high school as a special education teacher. In the classroom, he was more than an educator. He was a mentor and a guide who built strong connections with all of his students. At the same time, he poured his energy into coaching, and in 2000 helped lead our football team to an undefeated season and state championship. He also served as a union representative, always advocating for the best interests of his colleagues and our school community. Ray's career then transitioned into administration, first as the supervisor of special services and now as our director, a role he has proudly held for the past 10 years. In each of these positions, Ray has gone above and beyond to support our students, staff, and families. Whether he's cheering from the sidelines at a Friday night football game or greeting preschool families at the annual Boo breakfast, Ray's presence has always been felt across our district. What makes Ray truly special is his leadership. Ray is the first person teachers and principals call when difficult challenges with students arise. And without hesitation, he drops everything to head over and lend his support. He has also developed and implemented successful specialized programs as well as increased inclusive opportunities for our students with disabilities. His commitment to his child study team is unmatched. He not only coaches and guides our team, but also inspires them with his mantra to "always complete your circles," a reminder of the importance of following through with care and compassion. Ray, you are an extraordinary leader, a trusted colleague, and a great teammate. Most importantly, you have always kept our students' interests at the heart of every decision. On the behalf of the Westwood Regional School District, thank you for your dedication, your commitment to our community, and your 25 years of service.
Very quickly, before we ask the board to move their motion, it should also be noted on your way out, there's plaques on the right before you leave. All of the staff members that you hear tonight will have their name inscripted on that plaque to memorialize their 25 years of service. So congratulations again to all our staff members tonight.
Now, Ms. Perrine, can you move C under awards and recognition, please?
Absolutely. Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following resolution be adopted. Whereas staff members have given unselfishly of their time and effort in the interest and welfare of the students of our school district, and whereas during the many years in the district staff members support the achievement and educational needs of the students of the Westwood Regional School District, and whereas staff members have influenced the lives of many students with their unwavering commitment and have earned the respect and admiration of parents, the community, and their colleagues, and whereas the Westwood Regional School District would like to recognize and honor the following staff members who have completed 25 years of dedicated and faithful service to the district, and now therefore be it resolved that the Westwood Regional Board of Education hereby recognizes the staff members' contribution to the district and expresses its appreciation of their dedicated service and directs the Board Secretary to include this resolution in the official minutes of the Board of Education and directs the Superintendent of Schools to present the staff members with a suitable certificate of recognition as a token of the Board's esteem. Leslie Bisdell, Brookside aide, Paul Castellini, middle school teacher, Pamela Gunther Duffus, high school teacher, Kathy Jenny, Washington School teacher, Rita Keon, Brookside School teacher, Theodora Petuska, middle school teacher, and Raymond Renshaw, Director of Special Services.
Thank you, Ms. Perrine. Can I have a second? Ms. Azalina? All in favor? Thank you all. Mr. Rosado, congratulations to everyone. We're gonna... Now, agenda item, public forum. During this first public forum, district residents and staff are invited to address the Board of Education on agenda items specifically listed on this evening's agenda. Board Policy 0167 requires that individuals sign the speakers list, giving name, municipality of residence, and specific agenda items on which a member of the board, I mean, a member of the public plans to speak and asks that all remarks be directed to the Board as a whole, not to individuals. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Although the Board may not respond to items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered and may be discussed tonight under the appropriate agenda items or new business at this meeting, at subsequent meetings under old business, or during a board committee meeting if appropriate. Each speaker's statement will be limited to three minutes in duration. This first public forum will be limited to 30 minutes in duration. We'll now start first public forum at 8:03 PM. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Aside from that, does anybody else want to speak? I don't... Ah, there's a lot to speak about. All right, seeing none, we will close the public forum at 8:03 PM. And we'll move along to administrative governance. Ms. Peck, can you move items under administrative governance, please?
I'd like to make a motion to move agenda items A through C under, uh, nope, sorry, agenda items A through C under administrative governance.
Can I have a second? Mr. Bertus? Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Rosado?
It might be for Dr. McQueen. Can you, someone to help me out with, because I don't remember what the NJCUSAC committee does?
So NJCUSAC is the State's Quality Assurance Continuum. It's the three-year review process. So by code, you have to put a team together that reviews the DPRs, which are all the performance indicators. And then we just meet as a team, review them, submit them. So next month, we will have the DPRs on the agenda for the Board's review. And then the team from the County Department of Education office comes out. So by code, we're required to have a multifaceted CUSAC team to start that process.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Rosado, roll call? Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Rosado?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Bertus?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried? Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Ms. Azalina, can you move items under personnel, please?
Yes, I would like to move agenda items A through Q under personnel.
Can I get a second? Ms. Martin? Discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Rosado, roll call, please? Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Rosado?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Bertus?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried? Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Finance and facility. Mr. Bertus, can you move items under finance and facility, please?
Yes, I would like to move items, agenda items A through O in finance and facilities.
Can I get a second? Ms. Perrine, discussion, please? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Rosado, roll call. Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Rosado?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Bertus?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried? Thank you, Ms. Rosado. Now moving along to curriculum and programs. Ms. Peck, can you move items under curriculum and programs, please?
I'd like to make a motion to move agenda items A through C under curriculum and programs.
Can I get a second? Ms. Azalina? Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Rosado, roll call, please? Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Rosado?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Bertus?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried? Thank you, Ms. Rosado. Now moving on to policy. Ms. Azalina, can you move items under policy, please?
Yes, I would like to move agenda items A and B in policy.
Can I get a second? Ms. Martin? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, Mr. Rosado, we have a roll call, please. Ms. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Rosado?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Perrine?
Yes.
Mr. Bertus?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carried? Thank you, Mr. Rosado. Now we'll move on to open... Now we'll move on to open public forum. During the second public forum, district residents and staff are invited to discuss any area of public concern that may be in respect to the operation of the schools. Board Policy 0167 requires the individuals to sign the speakers list, give name and municipality of residence, and ask that all remarks be directed to the Board as a whole, not to individuals. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Although the Board may not respond to items raised during the public forum, all public comments will be considered and may be discussed tonight under new business at this meeting or at subsequent meetings under old business or during a board committee meeting if appropriate. Each speaker's statement will be limited to three minutes in duration. The second public forum will be limited to 30 minutes in duration. We'll now open the second public forum at 8:09 PM. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing no names, I mean, seeing nobody coming down? We'll move along, and we will close the public forum at 8:09 PM. Would anybody like to bring anything to the table under old business? Seeing none? We'll move on. Would anybody like to bring anything to the table under new business? Seeing none? Oh, George, I thought you were going right into your adjournment. Mr. Bertus?
I just wanted to thank the staff at the middle school and the high school, because my sixth grader loves middle school, which is insane. I didn't think that was gonna happen. And the freshman also really likes high school. So thanks, guys.
Look where you started, Mr. Bertus. Thank you. Now, great. Ms. Azalina, please.
Okay, I just, I have two notes, and I just wanted to, even though they've left, I just wanted to recognize Derek Kane for his Eagle Scout accomplishment. The idea of a community garden is an incredible asset to our community. I feel very lucky to have young students and individuals in our community that are compelled to give back. I think it makes, you know, Westwood and our towns really special. And second, a lot of heavy hitters for people that we recognize for being in our district for 25 years. Some I know, some I don't. But what I do know is tenure teachers are staples. They become mentors, they become reliable peers and people that we can look up to. And it was a very good reminder of how very lucky we are to have such an amazing staff with us. Okay, that's it, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Azalina. Anybody else? Okay. Ms. Peck?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the agenda.
All in favor? We need a second. Mr. Rosado? 8:11 PM. Good night, everyone. Thank you.